Before we actually gavel our meeting to an opening, I'd like to invite our representative from Van Town Community Church, Nate Kingsley, to bring an invocation for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Father, you tell us to pray for kings and all those who are in authority so that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life with God near us and everyone else. And I thank you that you get to do that here in Perry. We have a quiet and peaceful life. Thank you for those who are in authority. Thank you for our mayor, our council, and the staff of the city hall, our school, our first responders. We're just blessed to live here. Thank you for their responsibility that these have taken on themselves tonight and for their terms. You've been gracious to do their job well. I ask this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you, Nate. I think Mike's supposed to be here tonight. Although, was it tonight that he said he wasn't going to be here? Okay, all right. So we're good. We are all present in the county hallway. I love the number two. Oh, that's right. His schedule got switched and had to work. Mike Connell did let me know that his work schedule got changed so he would not be here tonight. So with all council people accounted for, I think we'll go ahead. This meeting is called to order at 2:00 minutes before 7:00. Let's have the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands aloneation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, would you do the roll call for us, please?
Mike Connell.
Chad Fuller.
Here.
Mindy Galvaby.
Here.
Larry Mamber.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Hammond.
Here.
Looking now for approval of our agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as per my second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Reading and approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the May 4, 2023 regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Our preapproved reports and presentation tonight. We'll start out with Mindy Galvaby presenting the awards for the Mayor Ross DeLupe Perry's Pride Award and the Put Your Best Face Forward Awards. Mindy?
My choice for the Perry Pride Award goes to Brad, Lisa, Leila, and Flora Scherer. Did I say that right?
Close enough.
Scherer.
Come right forward.
Right.
Okay. And I'm so proud to present this because I love it when we do everything we can to keep the homes tidy and neat and pretty. It represents our city. And so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We're gonna get a picture.
Hold it up nice and if you have a...
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
We love it.
Appreciate it. And then my pick for the Best Face Forward is Just Darling Art, Uptown Main Street. I love the way her window always looks so cheerful and festive. And she does a really good job, especially Thanksgiving and Halloween and like that. She does the outside, too. So she's my choice for the Best Face Forward. And then your names are also going to be on a plaque that sits at City Hall as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mindy. We now have the privilege to have a report from the Chiwasi Humane Society. Jennifer Porter arranged for this. So we'll ask the representative to come up to the podium and maybe we could turn you just a little bit so the camera can see you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Sound better? Yep.
All right. My name is Holly Guilde. I'm the executive director at the Chiwasi Humane Society. So first, I want to give you a little bit of background on who we are and what we do, the resources we can offer, some information about animal control in Chiwasi County and what they can and can't do, what programs they offer and resources they offer. And then just some general information on community cats. I understand that's sort of the big topic here. Cats free roaming in the city, whether they're owned, unowned, whatever. So I have all sorts of handouts. I'm happy to leave with you guys. And if you have any questions, please just feel free to ask me.
All right.
The Humane Society is a private nonprofit. So we only take owner-surrendered pets. We don't do anything with strays. We are a 501(c)(3). We are not attached to any other entity. We are a private group. So we take mostly owner-surrendered animals. Currently, I will tell you, we have a waiting list of about 150 cats and kittens waiting for space to come in. Our shelter is fairly old and small. So we can only help as many as we can help. Dogs, too. We have a waiting list of dogs that's close to 100 right now. We do also hold the contract with Chiwasi County Animal Control to house their dogs. So the stray dogs that Animal Control picks up are housed in a separate section of our shelter. We are contracted through them on an annual basis to provide care. So Animal Control doesn't even have a shelter of their own. Animal Control also doesn't do anything with cats. So if it's not a cruelty case or a neglect case or a hoarding case or something that they are going to prosecute, somebody that's breaking a law, Animal Control doesn't... They don't pick up stray cats. They don't do anything with kitties. So Animal Control is mostly dog-focused. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. I know it's hard and it's confusing. And I feel like the general public, a lot of times, hears Humane Society or Animal Control and thinks that they're sort of one entity. And that's not usually the case. And it's not here in Chiwasi County either. So next, I wanted to talk to you guys about community cats. So free-roaming cats, most of the time, they are not owned. They have been tossed outside or they've been born to cats that live outside. Sometimes they're truly feral. They're not people-friendly. You can't touch them. Sometimes community cats are friendly and they, you know, will come up to especially their caretakers. And people can touch them. So there's a wide variety of things that sort of fall under that category. It used to be, for decades and decades, that shelters and animal controls trapped the feral cats or the community cats and just euthanized them. So for 50 or 60 years, that's sort of the way that they tried to handle that problem. And in all of that time, not one time did that ever work. So that doesn't ever decrease the numbers of cats because when you remove cats out of the habitat or their geographic location, it creates a vacuum effect. And so then new cats move in to take those resources. So trapping them and relocating them or dumping them somewhere else does not work. Trapping them and taking them to a shelter and euthanizing them does not work because that space just backfills. And usually in a very short amount of time, within a year, usually you're right back up to the original number of cats. The other thing that we have figured out does work is TNR. So trap, neuter, return. What that does is stabilize a population in a certain area immediately when you can do TNR. It makes for healthier cats. They get spayed and neutered. So trap, neuter, return, if you're not familiar with that, is they're humanely trapped in live traps. They get taken in, they get sterilized, they get vaccinated against diseases. They get ear tipped. So the top-left little bit of their ear is cut off, basically, during anesthesia. So it's not painful. But that also lets you tell at a distance, especially for cats who can't get near, that they have already been spayed and neutered. So it's a good way for people to know that they've already been done. Trap, neuter, return is very effective. I have, like I said, I have handouts here and I have lots of studies in here. But University of Florida did a huge study that's peer-reviewed on trap, neuter, return. And they decreased their community cat population by 85% because you're stabilizing that population and the animals are healthy and they're not breeding and you're not having litter after a litter of kittens. Cats can start having kittens, get pregnant, start having kittens as early as four months old. So basically, when they are kittens themselves, they have anywhere from four to six typically kittens in a litter. And they can have two or three or four litters in a season. So cats multiply very quickly. So getting them spayed and neutered is typically the way that you want to go. And if they are healthy when they're trapped, they should go back to wherever they came from because if they are in good weight and they're not sick and they look like they're doing okay, that means they have the resources that they need to survive wherever they're living. So that's always the best option. I will say that in this handout that I brought for you guys, they did a study on trapping and killing cats on the island of Tasmania, which is very small. But they had two different sites that they sort of monitored. And so they trapped as many cats as they could, took them in and euthanized them. And their population increased by 211% by doing that. So that's what happens when you take the cats out of the space, more cats, and typically less healthy cats that have been fighting for resources in outlying areas that move in. So it just increases the sickness. And obviously, you know, those cats are not spayed and neutered typically. So then your population starts to just go right back up. Does anybody have... The other thing I wanted to mention is unwanted behavior because I know that free-roaming community cats are annoying to people and they display behaviors that are destructive sometimes and that people don't appreciate. And a lot of times, that's the reason people don't want them around. But it is, there are studies that, once they are spayed and neutered, that decreases the fighting. It decreases all the yowling and howling that goes on and a lot of that destructive behavior because it just stabilizes their hormone levels. So TNR has an effect, yes, on the population, but it also has an effect on the secondary issues that typically people in, you know, in less rural and more urban or suburban areas are irritated with having free-roaming cats in their community. Does anybody have any questions for me?
So what do you suggest people in towns with their homes close together and like that, what do you suggest they do when a neighbor or two is doing what they consider helping?
Right.
And yet the kitties are going to the other homes, bothering their indoor cats, things like that. What do you suggest?
There are lots of ways that you can deter the free-roaming cats and keep them from your property. All of that's included in here. And any TNR group will be happy to help you with resources with those things. There are things that you can do, homemade remedies. There are also things that you can buy. There are ultrasonic things that emit a frequency that only the cats can hear and so people can't hear. There are different sprays that you can put down to help deter them, keeping your garbage picked up, not feeding, you know, people not feeding their own dogs and cats outside so there's not an additional food source to entice the community cats, you know, to come into their space. All of those are things that typically will help. And again, if you can get the cats, the free-roaming cats, spayed and neutered, that really helps decrease that behavior. They don't lock them up to your sliding glass door and pick a fight, you know, with your inside kitty through the slider because they just don't have the drive to do that anymore once they're spayed and neutered.
And they're not looking for a girlfriend.
Exactly. Exactly.
So the free-roaming cats, I assume they're being fed and watered outside?
Maybe. Some of them probably are. Some of them may not be. Some of the free-roaming cats are very good at finding their own food and water sources. So the colonies that are healthier typically have a caretaker and are being fed and watered by a human. But there are, you know, plenty of cats running around out there that are in a good weight and are healthy that completely fend for themselves.
But doesn't that draw out wild animals?
What, feeding them?
Feeding them all the time.
You shouldn't leave food out all the time. So most people that feed colonies outdoors, feed them at very specific times, maybe once in the morning or once at night, or maybe it's only once a day. But they feed them, they let them eat, and then they pick up any leftover food, the plate, you know, the paper plates, whatever they're feeding them off of. So there is not that draw for wildlife or other critters. You know, somebody at the neighbors' store can put out loose, you know, to come and eat the cat food that's left over down the street.
That's a big concern of mine.
Is having food left out.
There's food sitting out.
Draws in other wildlife, yeah.
There's a lot of diseases and parasites and like that if you're attracting wild animals into your yard that your kids can deal with.
Yeah. That's why it's important, too, once they're fed, is to pick that stuff up and get rid of it. Especially at night because that's when most wildlife are out them out and looking for food.
How do you keep up with the vaccinations?
That's hard. And now, like I said, there are some community cats that are friendly. But having an initial vaccine is definitely better than never having a vaccine. And there are, and you can Google it, but most of the vaccines, kind of the same as people, even though we're told to get them once every year or once every three years, if you draw their blood and check their titers, their levels are plenty high that they don't need a new vaccine. So just like in people, once they're vaccinated, their titer stays high for an extended period of time.
I will say that's like vaccinating over years for maximum efficacy. It's really good for humans where we can like control their health better. For feral cats, if you vaccinate them once, if you draw their blood 10, 15 years on the road, they still have the antibodies that the vaccine gave them. It may not be optimum levels of what we think, but it's still significantly improved and does help fight the diseases that you're concerned about.
And generally, community cats live four years.
Right, yeah.
So they're like...
They're deceased long before the vaccine becomes ineffective. And once you get them fixed, they're no longer looking for a partner to have sex with, passing on diseases. And that is one of the biggest ways that community cats pass diseases to each other. So once they're fixed and they quit having sex and babies, then that part stops, too.
So but when you start the vaccines, they need to be in a series, don't they?
No. No. I mean, ideally...
I worked on that for me, then it needed to be a series.
Sure. Sure. And for puppies and kittens, that's what they tell you for your house pets. But again, if you've got an animal that is feral or unhandleable, one vaccine is better than no vaccine. And they will, and especially if they're an adult, their immunity levels, you know, they're not... Their immunity is not warring with the immunity from their mom if they're still nursing, say, in a puppy or kitten. So once they're an adult, same thing. Like we get a vaccine as an adult. And yes, they want you to come back for a booster because that's ideal. But you still have antibodies from that initial vaccine.
I don't think it lasts very long, though.
It does.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, I will speak to that. It does. I worked in a vet clinic. I've worked in vet clinics for five years. And I got my bachelor's in animal science. And it does last that long. But you don't, they have immunity. So once they hit adults, I mean, most of these feral cats that we can't really touch aren't really going to be a lot of kittens. You can teach kittens to accept human contact. Adult cat's not really the same way. An adult cat already has their immunity. And not to mention, these cats are outside. So they're actually building more immunity than your household cats will. And so just that one vaccine's going to boost their immunity way more than your household cat would when that needs multiple vaccines.
I'm curious to know...
I have to disagree.
Well, I will say, I'm also a licensed veterinary technician. And I worked at Michigan State for nine years. And we do a lot of, we have a lot of animals with autoimmune issues that were not recommended to be vaccinated every year just for that reason because it's hard on their immune system. And so we used to pull titers all the time on the main things that we vaccinate for. So distemper, rabies, those kinds of things. And their titers were still well above where they needed to be eight, 10, 12 years after a vaccine.
I'm curious to know who finances the sterilizations and the vaccines.
So that's what all of these wonderful people are doing. Do we honor... I do. Yes, these are all community people. And I have a resource list here of who can help with that. We at the Humane Society do not have a formal TNR program yet, but there are area low-cost clinics. And all of these wonderful groups and individuals who spend their own hard-earned money and are more than willing to help people get the cats vaccinated and spayed and neutered.
All About Animals is a low-cost TNR clinic. And so they do donations and they collect a lot of funds. They can offer TNR for $25 for a cat. That includes vaccinations, fixing, and ear tip, and their pain medication for the next three days after surgery.
And all of that's done by...
Licensed vet. It's actually, All About Animals is a statewide program. And they have buildings and they, like, it's all licensed. It's all official. And then where that $25 comes from is usually like people like me and my husband.
Yeah, right. So the Humane Society in Ingham County also has a spay neuter, and they also get private grants and private donations. And they're able to offer very low-cost spay neuters as well. And I want to just build a little bit high on Lori Bailey. I have one community cat, Sibyl Wasso. And I've spoken to this group a few other times. So I, I don't know if you remember me or not, but I've been here. But they, one of the things that we try to do is support people. So if you have 10 cats and now you're talking $250, that's money, right? So we offer support for that. We have fundraisers. We have people that'll say, you know, here's $1,000 to do 40 cats. I mean, we can help with the multiples. MUC is Michigan Urgent Cats, who is on the list. And that's this nice lady right here. And they will offer funds if for needed, you know, if somebody can't afford to get their cats fixed. And I recently utilized them for two families and they would never have been able to get their cats fixed otherwise. And they were indoor cats, but they were having kittens, right? The other thing is that it's illegal by Michigan law to trap and relocate a cat.
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but we've given a time limit for this presentation and we're past that. And then we have a public hearing we have to move into. So I'm going to have to...
Sure.
...pass you to wrap it up.
Yes. Yeah, so like somebody said, I think it was Lori, the Capital Area Humane Society in Ingham County has actually a community cats program. They will come out and help people trap. They will do surgeries. If they have grant money, all of that is completely free. So...
We appreciate you bringing this information and leaving information for us.
I will leave this with you, yes.
Yeah, and if anybody, we've just got done covering a bunch of spay neuters for low-income or people that can't afford it. And then also, too, we're teaming up with Jackson County Humane or Animal Control. And we're helping people to...
And I'm sorry, but...
Oh, that's okay. But we have funds. So it's not like I can't do it because I have the money.
And thank you very much for that. We appreciate that information. Tom, did you want to say a few words before we move into our public hearing?
Just briefly. We, on a county level, things frankly are kind of slow right now. And you may have read the commission voted to instead meeting four days a month, four consecutive days. We cut that back to three. And then we even skipped a day this week because there just isn't that much going on at the county level. Cities and townships have greater police power authority to pass ordinances and stuff than the county does. So that's one reason why things are kind of slow. But I voted against that when I was in the party. The big issue that I see going on, I was down in Wasso Charter Township in a meeting, a public meeting over there zoning as it pertains to solar projects. I don't imagine you have much concern for solar projects or probably even wind projects here, but that's a big issue. And the county zoning ordinance is being changed. Now, you have your own and you implement it. So I don't suppose you're concerned that much about that. There is one effort that's being talked about. There's no specific program on it yet, but just starting to investigate rather the county commission could set up a housing authority to assist with the homeless issues, which are, of course, much more severe in Wasso and that area, I imagine, than you have here. And so there's some work going on that. And the public health, I understand through the Public Health Department that Perry Schools has received or is going to receive some additional assistance in terms of nursing and mental health right in the school itself. So now that may be something that you maybe had some impact on you so far. But other than that, no, I just want to show my face from time to time. And if there are any issues that come up, if I don't get to you, I'm sure you'll get to me first. And just as a quick aside, years ago, when I worked for the Attorney General, the issue came up with feral cats. Feral cats used to be designated as game animal. So of course, they could be destroyed that way. And there was such an objection, this was back in the 1970s. The legislature did change the law and removed them from the list of game animals. And so that option isn't open anymore.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. We're going to skip over and come back to the public comment, communications, and mayor reports because we were supposed to move into public hearing at 7:10. So I'm looking for a motion to move into our public hearing.
I move that we go into a public hearing to address the 2023-2024 budget and city millage rate.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Steve, to move into public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So we're now in, moving into public hearing now at 7:22. And this is in regard to the proposed 23-24 budget and also in regard to the military. Is there anyone here from the public who wants to address any questions or ask any questions regarding the budget? Council members, any questions or comments regarding the budget that you'd like to make during this public hearing time? We'll wait a couple minutes just to make sure if anybody changes their minds about speaking. Well, I think we've had adequate time for anybody to come forward. So we'll now close the public hearing at 7:26. And we'll move back to the items we jumped over. So now we're just into public comment regarding any topic anyone wants to bring up. We do have a three-minute time limit. You're welcome to step to the podium and make your public comment if you so choose. Not hearing anyone for public comment. We'll move on to communications. Shirley, do you have any communications for us?
So tomorrow, May 19 through the 21st, there will be the yard sales. We have lists of yard sales on our website, on Facebook, at the front desk. We have, I think I counted, 30 yard sales in town and eight outside of town on our list. So that's Friday through Sunday. I'm going to say Sunday. So and then the citywide cleanup is going to start on Monday for Perry residents only. The roll-off of dumpsters are going to be at the DPW behind the Sliding Hill. The hours are going to be... The hours are going to be Monday through Friday, well, let's say Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday from seven-thirty to three-thirty. Wednesday from seven-thirty to seven PM. And that's May twenty-second through June second. So we've got it going for a couple weeks. And we're closed Memorial Day, yes. And there's information on our website, on Facebook, and on the front counter also.
Do you want to just say those out loud?
Yes. Yep. So they will not take batteries or auto parts, tires, drums of like oil or liquid or any chemicals, no hazardous waste, no asbestos, and they'll dump them in for hours. So the gate is locked, so.
Oh, don't suggest that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that is it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that reminder. It's always a busy time for citywide yard sales. It's always a lot of fun, too. The city was provided with a copy of the Perry Township master plan. They've asked that we review it to see if there's anything that we should be aware of or that we see is conflicting with our master plan in any way. So I did pass that on to Larry with the planning commission and asked them if they would take some time to look it over and pass it around.
I'm gonna process it over and I'll get it passed on to our chair, Bob Dieter, in the next couple days.
Great.
A lot to digest.
Yeah, it is. It's, I thought they did a nice job with it. We do have a new street light at the corner of Main Street and East Second Street. And I did drive by it Tuesday night after it was dark. And it really does a nice job lighting up that area, especially the crosswalk area. So I'm very, very pleased with the final result. Consumers Energy installed it, and we paid a hundred dollars for it. And then we'll just have our electric bill increased by a smidgen to cover that. But we started working on that in November. And it was installed last week, actually Monday. So I'm glad that's done. That's everything that I had to report on. Do we have any committee reports tonight?
Just a quick reminder that the ordinance committee will be meeting next Thursday, the twenty-fifth, at ten AM during council chambers.
The Parks Committee has a meeting Tuesday, the twenty-third, at six PM, right here at council chambers.
Thank you, Larry. Thanks, Chad. Anything else?
I can give a brief summary of SESA.
Oh, great.
SESA had their first SWOT meeting, which went well this last Thursday upstairs. So it's a good step forward, lots of good ideas. We have another one Thursday, the twenty-fifth, at seven, I think it's, at Perry Township. So things are going forward in that regard.
Wonderful. Glad to hear that. Any other committee reports? If not, we'll move into presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and the payment be authorized.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving into old business, we'll see that we had taken no action on the possible adoption of the zoning ordinance amendment and an ordinance amendment, it's number three-seventy-nine, three-eighty. The hearing that is holding us up from being able to address these is not going to be held until the twenty-third of this month. So my suggestion is to do no action taken, and we'll address it at the next meeting. Moving now into new business, the possible approval of our silly, silly, yeah, our city millage rate. And the millage rate that we did approve, actually, at our last meeting at twelve-point-six-four-three-four was rolled down from twelve-point-six-nine-six-seven. And we now have a motion that Devon has prepared for us to do approval of the city millage rate. So even though we did that, because she's put it on here, I think we better do it again, for whatever reason.
I move that we set the city of Perry tax millage rate for 2023 at twelve-point-six-four-three-four.
Second. We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on then to possible approval of the city's 2023-2024 budget. Any discussion you'd like to hold on that is now over. Megan is here, if you do have questions for her. She came just, just for this reason. You'll see the motion is extensive, but it addresses each of the funds, revenue and expense totals.
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the public hearing was held, and all comments were heard regarding the proposed 2023-24 budget of all city funds with a general budget by activity number, from and all other funds by revenue and expense totals. And whereas the revenue and expense totals are itemized as follows. General fund revenue, one million, five-hundred-seventy-thousand, one-hundred-nineteen dollars. General fund expenses, one million, six-hundred-thousand, seven-hundred, ten dollars and sixty cents. Highway major revenue, one-hundred-ninety-two-thousand, three-hundred-ninety-three dollars. Highway major expenses, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. Highway local revenue, one-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. Highway local expenses, one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. Parks, Parks revenue, five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. Parks expenses, fifteen thousand. Drug fund revenue, zero. Drug fund expenses, fifteen hundred dollars. McQueen revenue, five hundred. McQueen expenses, five hundred. Sewer fund revenue, five-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-and-fifty dollars. Sewer fund expenses, five hundred, ten thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and zero, uh, one cent. Water fund revenue, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, four-hundred dollars. Water fund expenses, four-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand, three-hundred-five dollars and ninety-three cents. Water pool fund revenue, one-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, five-hundred dollars. Water pool fund expenses, two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, six dollars. Office pool revenue, twenty-eight-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. Office pool expenses, thirty-one thousand dollars. City hall fund revenue, four-thousand, forty dollars. City hall fund expenses, two-thousand, five-hundred dollars. Therefore, said budget be adopted.
Second.
Is that useful?
Yes.
We have a motion read by the quarter, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I would like to thank Megan for all of her work and help with preparation of the budget explanation and various succinct indication of what each line item is for. Megan, we really appreciate your work on this. Thank you. Thank you, council. We'll move on now to possible approval of employees' life, short-term and long-term disability. I believe you all got a copy of the comparisons from Security First Benefits Corp. Yeah? Any, any questions on that can be directed to Shirley because she's the expert on this. We appreciate you, Shirley. You're doing a great job. But this is actually pretty self-explanatory, as opposed to the health insurance. And that was more complicated to me, anyway. It shows our current plan. And if we stayed with the current plan, then the next column shows what the renewal rate would be if we stayed with that. Then in the lighter blue, it shows a Kansas City life, short-term disability and life and long-term disability, as you work your way down the column, Kansas City life. The next column is devoted to quotes from the Standard. The next column to MetLife. The next one to Equitable. And the last one at Lincoln Financial Group. So it's pretty easy to compare the numbers. Devon did spend quite a bit of time talking to Micah, is that his name? About the comparisons. And what she explained to me was the coverage, and Shirley also reinforced this. The coverage itself for the Kansas City life, is that right? Is far superior to the coverages for the rest of the compared companies. So even though some of the numbers are close, some of them are, are far apart, Kansas City's got the best coverage and, for the most part, the best cost. So that's what her recommendation, that's what Shirley's recommendation is, is for us to go with Kansas City life. Is that right, Shirley? Am I saying that right?
And that's what Micah also suggested, too.
So Micah's recommending Kansas City life. Devon agrees with Micah, according to my little sticky note here when I talked to her on the phone. And-
This is a current benefit that the, the city employees already get.
Yes, they already get what is listed in, in that first-
The very first column.
-blue column where it says current plan, old rates. Then if we stayed with that same plan, the renewal rates would be in what's in the second column. So moving then out of that company and into a new plan with Kansas City life is what's in the next column and on down with a different column.
So it's just short-term, it's not long-term disability.
There is long-term, yeah.
There is?
Yeah.
Oh, it's double, I'm sorry. There's two columns.
Right down the column, there's short-term disability in that first section, Kansas City life in the section. The next one, on down then to long-term disability, on down to life. And that's, that's it for each one.
I move that we approve Kansas City life insurance for employees' life and long-term, short-term disability insurance as presented and authorized by mayor's signed set agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Shirley, for explaining all that to me, too. Our next item on the agenda is a resolution that came to light by the ordinance committee when they were looking at the library ordinance. Do you want to say anything about that before we move into it?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and give everybody a little mental refresher. Back before the last election, we were looking at potential changes that we would want to put on the ballot for charter revisions. We started with four, two of them went on the ballot. This was one that did not get placed on the ballot. The reason being that Justin English got some advice from the state level that said we do not have to put this before the voters, really, that we could have a note put in our charter, basically that would explain the fact that we're now part of the district library and no longer have a city-directed library independent of, of any place else, so.
And it doesn't affect that we own the building or share ownership with the building?
No.
Okay.
No, it does not do anything to that. The agreement that we have with the district library contains our responsibility with the ownership of the building. This basically simply, as we'll see as we go through the resolution, sets our record straight and clarifies in the charter that we are not the sole drivers of the-
We're not operating the library.
Operating the library. Exactly.
Any questions on all that? Okay, looking for a motion.
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the city charter, section four-point-one-zero pertaining to the city library is no longer followed as a result of the community district library agreement to which the city of Perry is a participating member. And whereas the city desires to make it clear to its community and reduce any confusion as to why section four-point-one-zero of the city charter is not followed. And whereas the city attorney, having been in consultation with the Michigan Attorney General's office concerning this issue and having determined that the agreement controls the requirement of the city with regard to the library and no amendment to the charter is necessary. Therefore, it is resolved that the city shall authorize an allocation to be made to section four-point-one-zero of the city charter to state. The community district library agreement, along with any amendments thereto, supersede the city charter and therefore section four-point-one-zero of the city of Perry charter is no longer in effect. Any person may review a copy of the community district library agreement and all amendments thereto at City Hall.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you for reading that, Larry, and your explanation. Any other business to come before council at this time? Anyone else here for a public comment?
I have a question.
Okay.
I don't know who, what committee this should be directed to, but I would like to see a crosswalk.
Oh, okay.
At the intersection of Ralph and Watkins.
At Ralph and-
On East Ralph and North Watkins.
Oh, okay.
There's an issue with school parking. The kids run between the cars.
Oh, yeah.
And I understand from earlier meeting this week that the safety, during COVID, safety guard program, safety patrol was canceled. And that they're going to get another one together. But that is just very, very dangerous. And if there was a crosswalk there, I think that may control.
We talked a little bit, too, about the possibility of suggesting this school put some type of a fence-
Jersey barrier or fence.
The Jersey barrier, I don't know what that is, so I said fence, but-
It's a large metal barrier that a car can happen to.
Oh, I see, okay. On their property, so that kids don't run out through the cars, which is what you're hoping to accomplish.
Yep, mom and dad will come out with one child. And twenty-five seconds later, the second child will zip right across. zip right across. And because the height of the children versus the height of the cars that are parked there, you cannot see that, but the individual will come out between the cars until they are up in the middle of the road.
Is Jersey barriers spelled like the state?
Yes.
Okay. I will at least send some email to Superintendent Haven and just tell her the concerns been raised and see what her feedback is, to see if they have any plan for anything like that.
I know quite a few of the residents who've lived there quite a long time. If they have to go uptown, they turn north on Watkins before they go down Ralph. Go north one street, then come back.
Right, yeah. Avoid that block.
To avoid that, just because no, none of us, longtime residents, want to hit the child.
Oh, absolutely.
Watch it out the window all the time.
On the other side, too.
Oh, yeah.
Do they still, they don't have the cross guards that do 52 anymore either, do they?
Nope, and that's school responsibility, not city responsibility.
Okay.
Yeah, they do in the morning.
Is she? Okay.
They did, they did bring back the crossing guard. I did quite a bit of research because I suggested that they move the crossing walk, crosswalk on 52 from Horace to Ralph because it's not on a hill, and it's flatter, and the schools didn't feel that it was necessary at this time. I had MDOT people up onboard, and it was all up, the school has to tell MDOT, yes, we want to move it, and they felt that it's not necessary at this time. Not enough kids walk to school anymore.
Yeah, that's true. Not many do, but still, it only takes one to get a kid.
In this situation, the kids aren't walking to school, they're walking mom and dad's car that is parked in the school maintenance block.
Yes.
And there are no parking signs all the way up East Ralph.
You do not enforce that.
Kyle seemed to be on board with that crosswalk. We don't have to engage MDOT for the location he's talking about.
We just need to involve the school as much as possible.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they've been real good about working out things with the city, so I don't see that there's a huge problem. Those Jersey barriers are $50 apiece.
Okay.
And students...
At least they used to be. I don't know if they still are.
Correct, they used to be.
Yeah, okay. I will, Steve, send an email to Superintendent Haven and tell her the concerns been raised, and I'll talk with Kyle and have him engage with her as well, one-on-one, see if we can get some action there.
Thank you. It just, if they came out and watched, they see the same thing that the residents see.
Sure, absolutely.
It doesn't stop either. Today, there was an incident where one of the parents parked and just opened the door right up, never paid attention to any oncoming traffic, just... So like I say, as longtime residents, we know what to look for and drive very cautiously, but it's going to be one of these days.
It's a challenge. Although around the school.
It is, yeah. Okay, that's a good, good thing we'll get that addressed or at least talk about it. And anything else that we should be aware of, council members? No other public comment? Any items for our next agenda? We did mention the no action taken on our two items under old business, so those will move to the next agenda.
How about what the police committee has been looking at, too?
Oh, yeah, we'll put that on, I think we're going to move that to like the June 15th. Yeah, June 15th agenda, we'll have a report ready from the police committee. We're still pulling some stuff together for that.
I think now that we've approved the notation for the city charter with regard to the library, there are two other ordinance items concerning the library that we can now move forward to repeal.
Okay.
Section 284, just stated label library board and Section 1060 label library. And I'll make certain that those are on the agenda for our ordinance committee meeting this coming Thursday, and then we should be ready to...
Just do those.
To do those.
All right. So that's Section 284 and 1060?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
We couldn't do those until we have the notation of the charter.
Anything else? Ben, at 7:52, this meeting's adjourned.